Okay, so it's one o'clock and, oh sorry, eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock.
Yeah, eleven o'clock AM, uh it's time to call the special meeting for council for budget purposes to order. The first item is adoption of the agenda items, could I have a motion please?
Move.
Council Arneson moves it, second or, second?
Second.
Councilor Kunst, uh all those in favor? Opposed and not carried, thank you. Uh we've got one presentation on the agenda, it's the twenty twenty-one draft budget continuation, so I'll turn it over to Mr. Backen. Mr. Backen.
Uh thank you, your worship, Ms. Ruff and I will start this process off. The, uh today's festivities are, have been a bit altered from our original plan, uh just to kind of give us an overview. Today will be just a summary, I think, of the, uh, the, the discussion points we've had so far. And then as well, we're gearing up for the continuation of the McIntyre session, which has been scheduled for two o'clock on the twenty-ninth, which is this Friday coming up. And as we're all aware, but for those that might be listening in, um that will help us establish the priorities, uh hopefully complete the priorities for the uh budget session, and then we can begin to start unpacking some of the various uh options or scenarios that council may wish to uh consider going forward. Uh so that gives us a bit of a challenge today in that we can't go too far, so there's a chance we might finish a bit early today, or it may just give us some time for some general overall discussion. So as we begin today's session, what we've done is really compared it or compiled it down to two slides. Uh slides, the format of which you've seen before. Uh but today we've actually prepared the overview information that represents the various presentations we had on December the fourteenth, January the eleventh, January the eighteenth, and January the twenty-fifth, so Sandra.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor, if I might, do we have copies of those slides?
No, it's, I'll, I'll go to you after, but no, there's only two slides, so I'm sure they'll send them out to you, but let, just let Mr. Backen finish and we'll make sure.
Well, it would be helpful if we had the slides in front of us, thank you.
You will, soon, thank you.
And on that point, Sandra, do you, can you put up the slide so we can at least review that? There we go. And um this represents kind of the path we've been down, uh December the fourteenth, where we began the process, January the eleventh, uh January the eighteenth, and today, January the twenty-fifth, and the twenty-fifth I'll come to in a moment. It's in response to a suggestion at the, the last council meeting in terms of another option regarding protective services. So as we begin with January the eleventh, um that we may recall that was a starting point at four point one four, and included uh two additional R C M P as a, as opposed to the three that ordinarily we would be looking at requisitioning. As you may recall from the previous comments by Superintendent Power, he would prefer to see even additional R C M P in the range of four to five per year, um given the growth that we're seeing, but uh we have historically targeted on three, so that was the, the first January the eleventh scenario. Uh January the eighteenth uh was based upon some of the discussion of January the eleventh, hey, what if there was going to be no additional uh R C M P officers, just a scenario that was, uh I think, just put forth for discussion, and it was uh that that led us to a uh overall of balancing a number of three point seven nine. But at the end of that session, it was said, well, what if we went the other way? What if we said we would have five police officers addition, what would that do, and where could those funds come from? And that led us to a three point seven nine, uh and the uh suggestion of five additional officers, so uh to do so, uh what we've done arbitrarily at this point is we have said, okay, well, let's then uh look at the one budget that has been most variable or flexible because of the COVID experience, and say, let's look at recreation culture and parks and say if there was a reduction in that, what would that actually begin to look like? Again, not suggesting that, but just simply putting that out as a scenario to balance. Uh in the, now, we have to be a bit cautious on that, because even though while it's only scenarios and they're hypothetical, it could have impact, so in today's closed session, we can drill down a little bit further um later on this afternoon in terms of what that could look like again, based on a hypothetical, in terms of what the actual funding, uh funding numbers would actually be. So uh we've, we're going to cover that off, but of course, that means we're going to have to be cautious in this session, because we're not really talking about recommended scenarios, we're just talking about hypotheticals that will give us some basis to uh to have further discussions. So on that one, then as we go to the next slide, which is again the same format we've seen before, it simply reflects some of the adjustments uh that we've talked about, so Sandra, if you could put the next slide up.
Well, I had it.
I'll actually, yep, question.
Your worship.
You're muted, Jack.
Thanks, yeah, just let me get my screen up again, uh Council on, go ahead.
Yes, yeah, thank you, I'm just curious on this, on, on this item here, where it says growth forecast. On the seven fourteenth, there's a zero there, but I thought we had a, a different number, and then that number got massaged and improved upon between a couple of meetings, but we couldn't, we certainly wouldn't have had a zero there on December fourteenth, would we?
No, that's, that's correct, I'll let Sandra explain that, what we're talking about here are the variations from December fourteenth as being a base year. Uh so we've, uh, we've shown in the next column, for example, the, the growth scenario, so in, in that scenario, as I recall, I think it showed a growth scenario of one point five three, and then in the next iteration, we showed a growth scenario of one point seven zero. That reflected a uh overall reduction in the amount of revenue needed then to balance of point one seven. But I'll let Sandra take us through some of the history and variations on this, because uh it's always good to refresh ourselves, Sandra.
Sorry, that's correct, um we did start out in our original budget and the, included in the seven point one four is one point five three of growth. That was then revised by um B C assessment to be one point seven, so that's why we get an additional point one seven.
Sandra, December fourteenth is just a kickoff year, a kickoff start, we begin to use that as our benchmark to do the variations, is that correct?
Yes, yes. So this, the top line was where we sort of started, and then we added in some of the additional items.
Gotcha, okay, I understand, thank you.
Your worship, I can't, we can't tell if there's any hands up, so barring that, we'll go to the, the next slide and and I'll let Sandra just take us through the variations again, this is all about the variations and what we've done and added back in and taken back out, just so we have a better understanding of the model, so Sandra, if you can take us through the, the next page.
Okay, so here we've um got the changes that we've done uh to get to our current situation. So we have um moved off um some library expenses to the library levy. Um we've reduced what we anticipated our um recreation costs will be in this COVID year by adjusting some service levels. As well, we've, that's for the open um facilities. As well, we have adjusted from the two point six eight we expected for the closed facilities down to two point three five. And again, in this, now we see the one point five three becoming one point seven for our growth rate, um giving us an additional point one seven. And then we did a number of deferments. So it included in here are the R C M P reduction of the three officers, as well as um offsetting uh revenue coming in from the uh reserve for officers not received. We reduced our uh discretionary paving budget from five hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh we deferred uh all the new staff changes by six months, saving us a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. We also reduced the C P O lease based on timing and funding by the entire two hundred and twenty-six thousand. We did review building permit revenue and increased that by three hundred thousand based on our historical revenue numbers. And we brought in uh four hundred and seventy-five thousand from our surplus to fund some capital. Then at the bottom of this, we have added five additional R C M P officers at a cost of seven hundred and two thousand, that would get us those five officers budget for approximately nine point five months. And we've offset that with some additional cost savings in recreation.
And I think, your worship, for council's benefit, what we've really taken is our previous slides and just added a couple of lines to the bottom and tried to clarify them. And that represents the fact that originally we were going to potentially reduce the R C M P complement, so to keep the numbers consistent, we've shown that, but then we've added, if you will, back in uh near the bottom and, and taken the, the other level of funding as an illustration in terms of what that can actually look like. The, the, uh, the bottom line of it all is then that we are looking at in this scenario, and again, council hasn't really turned its mind to this scenario in terms of priorities as to whether or not the five police officers are a priority, more so than three, more so than two, more than zero, whatever that may be. Uh so it really shows though that what the impact would be, would be taking the funds necessary to fund those uh from somewhere else. Uh or, and those somewhere else is in this example was um R C P, but of course, there's other options council could look at. And it does show as well, though, that there are other areas that if, if there was to be uh some further consideration, and the topic or term used, uh last meeting was capital, something we don't recommend. But there is also a contribution to capital that we, we try to maintain each year, uh that focuses on facilities maintenance and road maintenance uh for non-B C C roads, et cetera, uh that we try to maintain. So a-again, the purpose of this is simply to illustrate more again the process and take the continuation of that process and determine if there's any additional scenarios we should be looking at. Uh so council has some time then uh to prepare for Friday, when we continue with our priority session, is I think we'd say we're about two-thirds to three-quarters finished that uh so that we could then uh take that information and plug it back into the, the budget itself, so. Uh your worship, that is as, as far as we planned on going today for staff's discussion. Uh we can entertain further discussion, questions, council may wish to have some discussion, or we can always uh uh adjourn earlier than anticipated for the first time perhaps in a long time in a budget session, so uh back to yourself, your worship.
Thank you, yeah, sounds like you're hopeful. I have a question, uh later on today, there's a motion to the impact of budget, if council approves it. And I know, and I know it'll be going to the budget process, that's the climate action strategy. Uh so there are some uh funding considerations in that motion, is, has that been contemplated in this budget, as you see in front of us, uh as a placeholder? If it does proceed, and I know that's another discussion, I don't want to get into a discussion, I just want to know if it's, if it's um been contemplated in this scenario.
So your worship will get Mr. Seffy ready to go, and I'll start with the overview, because you, you raised a good point, there's still a number of issues uh that we have to consider going forward for the budget. One of his, one of which is the climate action, uh now that document is primarily a strategy document. However, it has potentially uh shown some of the impact on our revenues and expenses going forward over a ten-year period. Uh some of these are already built into the budget, uh some are not. Uh an answer to your question then, um it is not fully implemented, but some of the items that were previously entertained or authorized by council are in fact included. Other topics though include such things as uh, uh I guess, water resources in terms of the use of uh aquifers versus use of Metro Vancouver water, or even libraries as we go forward to our future years, not so much this year. Uh those are things council uh will need to address or resolve, even if it includes a deferment to a later year uh through this budget process, however, the, the items that have separate levies um such as a, a water utility or a library levy are a bit easier for us to actually deal with, uh because we're dealing within a a compartmentalized area. Certainly has an overall impact the council needs to consider, but it's something that we can handle more nimbly. As we look in some of these uh situations though, such as climate action, that's where it's a bit necessary to, to drill down a bit more and to understand what's included and, and what's uh not, or what the implications would actually be. So for that, Mr. Seffy, I hope you had a chance to hop online now, and you can perhaps uh illuminate some of the, the uh I guess, the paths we have open to us with, with climate action.
Uh thank you, uh Mr. Backen and your worship, uh Mr. Backen is correct, what staff has included in the draft budget for this year does address uh our climate action needs in terms of the uh, the meeting of our, of our objectives based on the, the commitments that have been made historically. That said, your worship, it is important to note that they're not, these, these, I guess, items are not exclusive or unique to climate action, what I mean by that is uh they, they address many different needs, and, and as such, it is, I guess, uh potentially not uh possible and potentially not fair to just categorize them as, as just climate action items. And what I mean by that is, as an example, I do have Mr. Johan with me in the office, he can, he can provide further clarification or corrections if needed. But what I mean by that is, for example, you know, uh adding bicycle lanes, well, certainly they address more than climate action, they address uh transportation issues, they address uh community social issues and, and connectivity issues, and, and it's just an example that comes to mind. Anything to that, Mr. Johan, he's just showing me thumbs up.
Uh thanks for that, helpful background, thanks. Uh Council Arneson.
Yes, thank you, worship, and uh thanks for this opportunity to maybe delve a little bit uh exploring some of the uh content of the information that we're looking at today. So I did have a question regarding what uh policy options we had. For example, if we're looking at recreation facilities as being somewhat malleable, because we don't know about openings and the utility, et cetera, so I'm wondering if this opportunity, when we create more or less a concrete budget framework, if we'd also have an opportunity on maybe a quarterly basis to look at what the usage is and what other determinants there are to try and factor in opening up more of them, so I, I know that we've talked earlier about allowing staff to be able to make those determinations, but I'm thinking about substantial change in uh the social environment vis a vis COVID, and whether or not there might be some opportunity to inform council on a regular basis about what those numbers would look like, and how we could create something in our budget that would allow flexibility for that to happen.
Uh thank you, your worship, um Mr. Sterick can get on, on deck, uh as I try to navigate through this one. Um quite correct, uh there's, there's two different schools of thought here, I suppose. Uh the first is really uh the thought of the timing of the return to our previous service levels uh for R C P, and what that looks like, and can that be done in a more cost efficient, cost efficient manner? So for example, if, if we, um, these are just pure illustrations, um and they're, they're not intended to be uh reflecting reality. But if, for example, we, we knew we were gonna go back to the previous and open at, say, seven AM, but because of COVID, there was going to be a determination that uh, that no one was gonna be arriving before nine AM, it'd be very expensive and cumbersome for uh having to, to make those changes on a, on a, on a uh expedited basis to reflect that, so part of the reference on our uh January the eighteenth meeting was to say, well, if we're going to go down and kind of uh try to improve some of those numbers, there has to be kind of an in, in, immediate flexibility and an immediate uh ability to respond. Um so that's the one piece, um now, what we're talking about then today is again for illustration and hypothetical purposes really, uh to say, well, if we were to do something more significant, how would we address that, and just out of abundance of caution, we said, well, we'll address those, uh, those issues in a closed session, because we think it's a, it's really just for the purposes of making sure we can uh have a good discussion about what, what, what certain things uh result in or what they look like. Something of that nature, of course, has to be endorsed by, by council. The hour changes, staffing levels, uh it need to be, those are things that the managers can make on, on the fly. In terms of the frequency of the first item then, uh I don't know, how often can we report or advise council as to what's going on? Uh Mr. Ster has been sending out a series of memos, I think, with uh numbers and, and uh, I think uh uh revenue that has been going through, and I think that might have been uh monthly, but Mr. Ster, I'll, I'll let you address then in terms of our, our, our process for informing council, some of the numbers to date, and what you think would be a good thing going forward, because I think we may right now simply be doing that on a more frequent basis, but I'll turn that over to you to comment on the reporting, how it's gone, and uh, and what you would think would be prudent going forward.
Uh thank you, Mr. Backen, yes, um just in response to Councilor Arneson's uh comment there, the, the reporting definitely, um whether it's quarterly and, and more set, uh we can do that, we've just been responding, I think, as we have had changes uh to what's been happening in the recreation facilities. Um and so you might have noticed in the distribution list, the latest report, just as far as usage, that obviously I think is to help inform council of uh, of the uh of the use and an opportunity that's there, so um, yeah, just to agree with uh what, what uh Mr. Backen said, the the reporting um and the changes um that, that can happen, there's a lot of different options out there. Uh what can happen with the opening, and uh I think um reporting will help inform that for council.
Okay, thank you, I do have a second question, uh it's, I think, brief and easy to um understand and, and contemplate, find an answer, so I'm wondering if our R C M P, uh so those numbers that we currently have, because I've read recently there's anticipated uh increases in their remuneration. Uh so I wonder if those numbers that we're currently looking at in our budget, do they include a substantial increase potentially for our C M P officers?
Thank you, your worship, um looking into that historically, um we have been anticipating and putting a bit uh some funds in our R C M P reserve for some of those potential increases. Uh what Council Arneson's referring to more recently is the fact that I'm, I'm going by memory, but I think it was two thousand sixteen or so, since his last time, there's been an increase uh in uh the pay scales for the R C M P, so they've, they've been out there for some time, and of course, that correlated to when they began the talk of uh uh forming some sort of employees group, whether it be a, an association or, or unionization or something in between that works with the federal scheme. Uh so we have built in some modest amounts to take that into account, based on what we've seen industry averages being, um but you are quite correct in terms of uh we do not know if we have sufficient or what those numbers will actually look like. We do anticipate uh the R C M P costs increasing, and hopefully the buffer that we have would be sufficient. Uh but uh there's no uh way of knowing at this point. Uh the, the buffer right now is, I think, best described as being resident in our R C M P reserve, so we've had that, and we have utilized that as a smoothie mechanism going forward, but also kept that in a relatively healthy state in part to ensure that if these changes occur, we're, we're well positioned for that going forward, and again, could perhaps even smooth some of those changes in now. Uh Sandra or Sam, um anything you wish to elaborate upon the, the, the process for planning, the future increased costs associated with the R C M P?
No, that's our approach, we do increase it um as a budgeted amount each year.
Okay, thank you, and just one final question, so I don't know the degree to which we've been talking about this, um rather large budget item for potential water infrastructure. So I'm wondering of that budget envelope, is, is that, does that have to stay in that discrete envelope, or is there any opportunity for that to be manipulated in any way to cover different types of costs, or is it only for water infrastructure and water management in that department?
Your worship, the water utility um is the, the area where the issue resides, and that is uh Metro Vancouver or use of well water. Um as was referenced, there is inclusion in that category, all things related to water. But because it's a utility and basically it's user pay, we're not able to, to allocate those funds. Uh should be careful, there is some theoretical and some extreme ways that can be done, where you can allocate water from the utilities, allocate funding from the utilities to other organ, as, other divisions or operations, but those are quite extraordinary and um have a lot of complications to them, so and I think the short answer is because it's a water issue, it's compartmentalized within that utility, and uh we really can't move surpluses or uh or other funds around, uh because it was uh obtained from a, a select group of uh users that have actually paid for that, so it should be still resident within the utility.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh Consequents.
Oh, hi, um can you hear me? Yes, I'm not muted.
Okay, I'm clear.
Okay, um thanks, a, a lot of my questions have now been answered because of uh Councilor Arneson's bringing a few of those up. Um my question actually is just defer staff changes for six months, was this the arborist and the, that had to do with the um yeah, the tree bylaw?
Correct, primarily that was in response to um some of the engineering needs and the associated positions with um the tree bylaw, as you may recall, um the point was the discussion at the last meeting, uh there was some uh some reference to an arborist and some uh, some uh other support. Uh I believe there might have been another position uh in engineering or, or so that was associated with that, but primarily that is the uh, the area we've done, uh we've actually simply said, uh look at our, our timeline, look at the budget passage, look at the time to hire, what's a realistic timeframe from within which we can actually um uh accomplish that objective, and the six months seems to be the, the appropriate timeline.
Okay, um yeah, I'm happy to see the five uh R C M P officers included in this and how that might get paid for, but uh my other question, could you please just uh refresh my memory about the, the surplus and where that came uh for the, the contribution to capital? Is that from the grant that we got, or is that from somewhere else, that surplus?
Yeah, no, the, the surplus is referring to our use of our, our, our yearly surplus um that falls into an account, so uh it has two components to it, each year we hope to operate uh with a surplus, uh we try to be slightly under budget by one or two percent. Uh this is going to be a challenging year, as we've referenced previously, but we also have what's called um uh the accumulated surplus, uh there's none, there's some funds there, not, not a tremendous amount, but a, amount that we can use for balancing and smoothing, so as we said previously, the use of surplus then is, is an amount that we can utilize to maintain our contribution to capital uh and uh, and therefore uh maintain our, the direction council previously provided. As you've referenced then, the, the, the point, I guess, with the uh grant is that the grant, uh the one-time grant from the province, yes, uh uh has been utilized, not directly for that, it's been simply put into our revenue portion of our previous slides, uh so we haven't allocated it, so I guess one could say that uh we're using it for that, we prefer not to. Uh we prefer to say that we're using that for the impacts of COVID, most, was clearly prevalent in uh recreation culture and parks, but also having impacts throughout the organization itself, so we're trying to make that division that the grant, while revenue is being allocated back toward uh COVID-related implications as opposed to uh utilizing uh it for any capital infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh Council Davis.
Yes, thank you, um, um one, just to, just to um update on, on where Froze is uh about future uh reports in the, that will affect uh the budget or affect what we want to do with the budget. We, even in special closes, are there any other reports uh today that um maybe we might have to put in, like I, I, it's a com, I just a comment, it was uh because I, because of, because of what you said at the beginning of the meeting, uh this, this, this meeting is going, we're kind of relying on um things to fall into place, uh and I know they take a long time to fall into place sometimes, but I just, is there, because I know special closed today has a few uh reported that, that, uh wait a minute, I don't know if I should be saying that. Well, I just, I'm concerned that we're getting all the information upfront, um and maybe uh uh that, because these notes can be affecting, you know, these notes can be, well, they're gonna change real fast here. Anyhow, I guess that's maybe just a comment, I hope we have, it's, it's hard to get every, all your ducks in line, okay, thank you.
Uh thank you, your worship, no, it's, it's a good comment, because we've been, we've been at this now for, while staffing at it for some time, even council, if you go back to our December fourteenth session, for example, and, and just prior to that, all the material that was distributed, uh you know, through that process, whether it be capital or subsequent to that process, operating and the uh, the, the budget, uh I guess, a presentation, and then the budget um reports, uh we're all still staying the same basing it on those, so those numbers have not materially, materially changed. If there has been a change, we've tried to reflect in the presentation, and in our process going forward then, we've given you uh unfortunately, a whole lot of information in its, its raw form. We summarized it once, and since then, we've been continuing to refine it and summarize it, and uh even today, why we show where we were at and, and where we're going to helps you correlate back to that original package to see what those information uh items are. And that includes not only operational course, but capital, uh there are the capital listings that were provided. Council certainly has a discretion to review and reprioritize, and the, the McIntyre session may give us uh some, some uh cross-organizational things uh that we may want to prioritize or look at or review. Um and what we're working towards, I would say, is, is this uh is, uh thanks to Sandra, we really tried to streamline the process to give you the, the changes, as opposed to repeating the detail over and over and over again, still basing it on the original detail, but tried to streamline it, so as we get into the decision-making processes going forward, you'll have some time to actually reflect on not only the information, uh but as well reflect on some of the philosophies or directions we're taking it in, so you can provide us with the feedback in terms of the areas where you'd like to see some revisions occur, and it may be, well, let's change our focus from roads to drainage, or maybe it's from drainage to roads, or maybe find the way it is, or it may be recreation culture and parks, uh facilities to fields and, and those sorts of things, this is where we're getting close, I think, now to the point where we can take some of the input from council, as it's collectively then received, not just individually, but collectively, because we're going to have to start to craft some budget numbers to reflect that, uh but to get to the point where we But to get to the point where we can have some direction or resolutions to go forward. Again, we think that if we're really fortunate, that we can maybe finish the McIntyre session and then maybe right after that session, provide some options or directions, depending on how that goes. Or we may have to slow it down because the direction coming from those priorities may need some, some reworking, and that's what we're, we're moving towards.
Thank you very much.
Uh, councillor Rick.
Uh, yes, thank you. I wonder if we could go back to the first slide, please? Okay, so the 3.79 that's at the bottom, if that's an anticipated tax increase, I think it's still way too high for COVID year. I don't think we should be looking at anything higher than cost of living, which I understand is about two to 2.3%. So from a policy perspective, I can't support a 3.79% tax increase. I just wanted to put that out there. Secondly, I'm a little confused on the comments that were made earlier with regards to the climate action plan. And what's confusing me is, are we putting new monies for climate action into the engineering budget? Or are we just shuffling around monies that are already in the engineering budget? Because I think if we're, there's a clear distinction between those two categories, and I think they need to be differentiated in any budget documents we're looking at.
Mr. Seffy, if you could perhaps drill a bit deeper into your comments as to the, there are some funds being reshuffled and there are some new monies needed. I guess that begs the question, then, where are the monies being shuffled from and to what extent? And to what extent are new monies needed, and are they a portion of the engineering budget?
Uh, thank you for the question. I don't know if Ms. Hykert has the information, the more detailed information. But yes, the, I guess, the, the quick response to the question is there are requests, there are items requiring new funding within the budget this year, as there are some re-allocations as well. Ms. Hykert, can you add anything?
I can. Thank you, Mr. Seffy. Through the mayor to council, for example, the cycling network is indicated as a climate action strategy program. However, it's something that's within our master transportation plan and our cycling network plan. So we have a capital project that requires township funding, but it also has a portion of TransLink funding identified towards it. It's something that has historically been in our budget for transportation capital and is still there. But within that document, we have listed the climate action strategy methodology for it. So that's an example of one of the items that historically has been included in our engineering budget, but does have a climate lens on it.
Okay, well, I wonder, Mr. Backen, going forward with the budget process, if we could get a clear delineation of what's already in the budget as opposed to what are the new monies going into the budget under the climate action label? It seems quite clear to me from the feedback that I've seen, and we will, of course, be discussing this when we get into the regular meeting, that people are very supportive of seeing action on climate action, and they want to see it designated as such. So that's my one comment on that one. Second comment is with regards to policing. I do support the additional policing. I think policing is clearly a legislative mandate of the community. I think the case has been made clearly before council that additional policing is needed based on our growth. So I am supportive of seeing that additional policing happen. The third comment that I have is, is it possible for us to move parks and rec programs outdoors? So instead of offering them inside where it is more expensive to offer them because it's inside, can we run more outdoor programs? Things like, I don't know, outdoor yoga, outdoor trail walking. I'm just wondering if we could focus more in parks and rec on the outdoor offerings and making sure that those are still available to staff. So those are my comments at this point. Thank you.
Staff, may I note that? Thank you. Councillor Woodruff. Councillor Woodruff, I think you might have the music.
Of course it was, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, Mr. Mayor, through to Mr. Backen, do we know a timeline on that presentation from Metro Vancouver regarding water services before we get too much further in the budget, given that that significant investment's currently in the budget?
Mrs. Bowers has been working on that, and I think the, actually, Mrs. Bowers saying she hasn't been working, engineering's been working on that, I believe.
That's correct, Mr. Backen.
And so perhaps, Mr. Seffy, you can give us the updated timeline?
We haven't received an updated timeline. We acted on the, the request as soon as it was directed to staff by council. So Metro Vancouver staff at various levels, I think three different levels, are aware of, of the request, and they're working on, I guess, an appropriate response with respect to both timelines and as well as the, I guess, the timing of, of their presentation.
Okay, so.
I think Mr. Seffy.
I need that deciphered for me, Mr. Backen, if you can do that.
Yep, I think what that's referring to is, on the expedited basis, they're looking back, looking at getting back to us, hopefully by March. I think, we're not expecting it in February per se. It's gone to Mr. Dobrevony, and it's gone to the GM. And they are, as Mr. Seffy said, looking at them both. But I believe where our best guess is a March timeline.
Okay, so maybe I'll, maybe we can discuss it on Friday, or if we have more time, we can come back to it. If we, we have time, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to talk about some process challenges around that in terms of moving the budget forward, but still not committing to going into the, you know, expanding the water treatment business. And so we have that, we have that other side of the story. Not that we're not getting the complete picture, but I kind of want the sales pitch from Metro Vancouver prior to council making that decision, just so all the information's on the table. So I'll, I'll take suggestions on how to manage that with the timing of the budget bylaws.
Thank you. And so, Mr. Backen, you take that back. It's a capital, I know there's capital that's operational and it would be helpful for council to have some idea, especially as you said, trying to make some decision points along the way. For the capital side of the water, doesn't actually hold up the operational side of our budget. So perhaps we can have some clarity on that.
A point of order, your worship, or a point of information? Isn't that going to be the water utility? Well, that, that wouldn't affect this budget, would it?
Uh, that's correct. So that's why I asked staff to give us some information. It helps council to differentiate between the, the operational budget, the water utility budget, capital budget. And then, you know, certainly those decision points have been made at some point, and it certainly affects the dollars that we spend. So I think that's all part of what would help for council, so.
Can I follow up on that, Mr. Mayor? Because I think I'd like to clarify. You can always come back to me if you wish, but I, I want to clarify while we're on that topic.
Sure, I just, I'm just trying to interpret what you're asking for. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I appreciate that clarification, because maybe I'm taking some things for granted. No, as far as I understand it, maybe we can have it clarified. Council would be aware, or in my opinion, should be aware, that this capital program of approximately $6 million, if I recall, plus an operational lift is occurring within the water utility, but is still within the overall budget. So we would be spending money from the water utility users to treat water locally from the ground. I just want to confirm that that is currently within the budget, because I tried to refer that for public consultation, which was voted down. So I just want to confirm that it's currently in the budget, and if we don't do anything, it will proceed. So then, the presentation in March may, may not be any point to having it if we're headed down that road already. So maybe Mr. Backen can clarify for councillor Long and others.
Your worship, a two-part clarification is that I, I think I understand the question. And Mr. Seffy will have to help a little bit on the back end of this. But it is quite correct that we're focusing on the utility budget. So that is a, a, a separate category, if you will. But that is part of our overall township budget. So we, we do have to ultimately resolve that by our, our ultimate timeline of May. That is the outside latest date for adoption of a budget. We must have a budget that includes the water utility. Going forward, though, in terms of where it sits right now, from where the process started, Mr. Seffy, can you clarify then in terms of the sum of money we are holding to actually either, to start, I guess, capitals construction for treatment or operationally to buy more metro water? Can you comment on the, on that, those sums and where they're at and how they differ?
Thank you for the question. The, I guess, treatment option requires some design work before we can actually get down to construction. So that has been tentatively included in the 2021 budget. There is obviously the option of spreading that over a number of years. And, and that can happen at the same time, or at the same time as, as council approving the budget. And as far as the operating is concerned, there is the, I guess, the inclusion, incorporation of the approximately $1.5 million per year based on the current rates, based on the experience of last year, that has been included for the purchase of additional, additional bulk purchase from Metro Vancouver as well.
So if I can clarify that further, Mr. Backen. So, but I want to, what I, what I want to confirm is that, as of right now, there's a $6 million capital project within the budget funding envelope within the water utility. So that, I don't think that was mentioned by Mr. Seffy, that, that as of right now, if we, nothing's changing, we're, we're approving a $6 million capital project to expand water treatment, which also includes an operational lift. Would that be correct?
Your worship, I'll, I'll try to clarify that, and then Mr. Seffy can assist. So I think what Mr. Seffy's saying is, operationally, right now, we've included in the budget a million and a half dollars for additional metro water. Included in the budget then for construction. And again, that's done because it's highly unlikely we'd have treatment plants. I think it'd be impossible to have any treatment plants done in 2021, even if that was our objective. As we moved into the, to the capital element of those things, Mr. Seffy, this is where I'll need your help. I think what we've built in is some envelopes. However, I think you're suggesting that the, the envelope now contains merely planning or design money, not actual construction money. But if you could pick up on that in terms of if we, if we are correct that we have operating money for Metro Vancouver as part of the maintenance of the system as it is or transition, what are you anticipating that would be included in 2021 that would relate to the filtration option?
Thank you for the clarification. My understanding, perhaps Ms. Ruff or Ms. Hykert can, can confirm, my understanding is that there is $6 million included in the 2021 budget based on the fact that even though the design is required to occur first, we will be able to complete some aspects of the construction within 2021. So my understanding is that it is currently included.
Okay, so, if anybody else wants to go ahead, I have one more follow-up on that.
No, uh, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just, I think that's great. So I think I've got that clarified. If the rest of council wants to follow up, they can. You know, we're, we definitely need to, in my opinion, you know, be careful about approving a construction project that, of course, may take more than one calendar year to complete. But we are headed down the path of approving the water treatment expansion, pulling water from the ground versus the Metro Vancouver option. So I just want to clarify that that's what's currently in the budget, and I may, and I can follow up with staff separately to maybe come up with some alternative ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, now I'm confused. I just want to ask, Mr. Backen, do we not have a water utility budget and a universal service budget? So I was, and I may have been wrong, because it's may be helpful. I was under the impression that the water was under the water utility budget, not under the universal service budget, which we discussed today. So I just wanted to, I think that's my earlier comment, is that we're moving to the universal service budget, but there's still an opportunity for council to make a determination on the water utility budget, the capital budget, without impacting the assets. I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that. I could be mistaken.
Effectively, that's correct, your worship. I'll try to explain how that's the case. So the water we're talking about now, whether it be from Metro Vancouver or whether it be filtration, is coming from the water utility budget. We have other utilities, and in fact, you've hit upon some university utilities that are not user pay, but they're township-wide. So an example of what could be a universal utility might be policing or fire. There is no, there is no user pay group or subset. It applies to everyone in the township, because they've got both, they've got protective services coverage. So the university utilities are not affected by this. This is talking about the water utility. In terms of water globally or generally, if you went to some drainage projects or some other enhancement projects that we might actually have, they may fall outside of the water utility itself, because they may be in a broader application, applying to all residents, not merely those in the utility. But our focus today, clearly here, is upon the, the water utility, because that's where the, the filtration or the Metro Vancouver water expansion are included. And keeping in mind that all of these utilities and all of these funds all wrap up to become our general budget, but they're very much different segments. And as was referenced earlier, the discussion we're having about the water utility, by and large, does not affect the general tax rates.
Excellent. For that, councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it was an interesting discussion. We started off talking about the budget. Now we've had some questions on water. I just wanted to reemphasize my position on the water. Is it, eh, you know, as a former teacher, I want to educate ourselves about water and what works and what doesn't. And I'm not sure there, I think there's an old report sitting back on how many, it might be a little bit dated, but it's certainly information, how many residents in our community on well, how many agricultural on, on well, how many groups are on water, where the blends are. And, Mr. Backen or Mr. Seffy, is that information still out there? I know we, we started off the discussion, now it's kind of, it's more of an educational thing, Metro Vancouver education, Township of Langley education. If I may, that's my first question, if I may.
Mr. Seffy?
Yes, thank you for the question through you, your worship, to councillor Ferguson. Information is available in terms of the number of residents, the number of properties that are on, on the municipal well or, or rather, the municipal system, I should say, not municipal, the municipal system, and those that are independently and privately utilizing the groundwater resources. So we have the information available. As council has been advised in the past, we have a blended system. So it is not possible to say, as an example, Brookswood is, is on the municipal well, and, and the rest of the township is supplied through the Metro Vancouver. The entire municipal system consists of both groundwater resources, groundwater, as well as purchased water from Metro Vancouver. And that system is scientifically balanced to make sure that it is monitored and that the extraction is sustainable and is based on the ability of the groundwater to replenish itself based on the, the rainwater that then is infiltrated in the ground.
Okay, well, I, I just maybe want to dig that report, because it did, I remember seeing a map years ago of little dots of where the wells were and who's got water. You know, my, you know, living in the Brookswood-Furnridge area, you know, my neighbors down the street, they're on well, and I think they're on the same aquifer is that it's drawn from our Brookswood wells. And they said, oh, they love their water, and they're on a well. They said it couldn't be better. They don't want anything other than what they've got. Now, they don't have Metro Vancouver or Township one, they have their own well, but it's the same aquifer. So I guess that has to be clarified, you know, that a lot of people are on wells or are very happy. Some aren't. I've been in a, when I was in Savour River Uplands, you know, we were on a dug well, and you know, that was my, excuse me, that was my own fault. And you know, in some summers, it went a bit dry. Other times, we had to ration out our water. I think we only had water delivered a few times, but that happens. That's, that happens depending on the area, depending on the aquifers. There's many, many aquifers in the community. And so, you know, we have to ed- educate, you know, and, you know, I'm, my position has always been, as long as we have good, good quality water coming out of the aquifers, which is as good or better than Metro Vancouver, then we proceed. If I wanted to ask you, we, the main source of this argument discussion, if I may, Mr. Seffy, is the fact that there were some concerns in Murrayville. I didn't, I wasn't aware of any other concerns throughout the, the community. Is that correct?
Thank you, your worship. The main source of this discussion, councillor Ferguson is correct, is the fact that the township, over a number of months, or maybe longer, received complaints, concerns from residents. the township over a number of months, maybe longer, received complaints, concerns from residents within the the Murrayville area primarily and and some north northeast Brookswood, I guess, with respect to the the color of the water from the catch. The system, as I said again, is a blended system. We utilize a number of wells. The wells that we have, that we have now put on hold and and are no longer extracting from in the Brookswood slash Murrayville area were found to contain naturally occurring iron and manganese that resulted in the color of the water. The discoloration, if you will. The treatment, therefore, is required to address that discoloration issue. And again, it's naturally occurring and because of the proximity of those residences to the well, some residents would see it more than others because of the fact that the water system, I guess, works in a way that if there's more extraction, so I guess to put it another way, if somebody resides in a in a cul-de-sac with a dead end water pipe, it is likely that they will see effects of it more readily than somebody who is along a larger diameter pipe that is not a dead end pipe. I hope that makes sense.
Okay, well, let's get back to the thank you, Mary. I know we're going to have a lot more discussion on the water, but I mean, I just want to continue that. Number one, I, it's been mentioned by other members of council, as you know, and in the past about being a COVID year, COVID budget and deciding on the number, the percentage we want to proceed with, whether it's a cost of living or or another number. I know the cost of living varies depending on where you live, both in the province, in the region, or in your actually local community. That does vary. I know that we have to come to our senses. I think it's important to look at the RCMP, although we have to look at how many we got last year and kind of budget the two out and balance the two out. Those are things we have to discuss. We also have to discuss a climate action plan. It's a great plan, but how are we going to fund it and what creative ways can we implement it? Those are all important things. The libraries, park and recreation, getting back to normalcy. And also, Mr. Backen or whomever looks at it, have we had a comparison or looked at some numbers from, if they're in, from what other communities are doing with their budget and percentages, if I may?
Your worship, that yes, that's something we continue to to watch for our similar sized municipalities and even the city, for example. So I know we've we've heard that Surrey has, I think, going by memory now, we can certainly recirculate these as something like three percent, but they've added a three hundred dollar folio levy. Sorry, they've added a two hundred dollar folio levy. They went from one hundred to three hundred. We've heard the city is probably a little bit lower than that and they've done some something utilizing utilizing their reserves, which we we understand were prudently provided for from their casino revenues. And Abbotsford, for example, we understand is in a very similar situation to where to where we are and are looking at, I guess I would say something in the same range, so versus say some other locations, mostly north of the river, where we're seeing increases, again, depends on each community, but the city of Vancouver, for example, was more significant in the five percent range is what they were, they were looking at.
Yeah, my last point, I guess my last point and as something we'll ponder over the next few weeks is the fact that where other communities are raising their taxes, are using creative methods for getting more money off their people one way or another. You know, we're we're kind of doing the best we can to look at understanding COVID and the challenges our population has. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thanks. Just want to make a common follow up from Counselor Ferguson on on this topic of the amount of, you know, what the tax increase is and and some suggesting that it should be the cost of living increase only. But, you know, one of the the challenges, and I think there's going to be arguments made, certainly, you know, it's been a tough economy because of COVID for many of our citizens, but it's also been very difficult for the township. And it's quite clear to all of us that we've had a significant loss in revenue, particularly in our parks and rec area and in our facilities, and there's been a significant loss of revenue. So you know, on one hand, we can talk about a COVID budget being as low as possible. On the other hand, we, with a COVID situation, that's had a significant hit on us as a municipality as well. So I I think, you know, I I certainly appreciate the work the staff's doing to get it down here to three point seven nine and and I know there's still further discussion and comments to be made, but I I'm not sure that during COVID that we automatically should just hold it at the cost of living. I think we have to consider also the significant costs that it's how it's affected the township and we have to manage the township's budget. That's a responsibility that we have and during this really difficult time, I think we have to be careful how we how we manage it. So so, you know, for me, we'll see where the range is and what it is at, but I'm pleased with the way the staff's moving so far. Thank you.
Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to throw out invitation. We're going, if I'm gonna go back to the water topic, I'm planning on going to the Alder Grove Water Treatment Plant. So if there's any other counselors that need a refresher, I know I have not had a tour yet. And this is going to help me make probably better decisions. So anyway, that's tomorrow. So just throwing that out there.
Yeah, thanks. I didn't mean to to get into a water debate, Mr. Mayor. I think I was just trying to highlight that that I want to come forward and and remind everybody that this capital expansion is in there. I still think we're unfortunately getting ahead of ourselves a bit. I'm not sure that it's just about the drinkability of the water. I don't think I would argue that that we can't treat water to a drinkable standard. I don't think it's just about drinkability and this is one of the reasons I wanted to get to Metro Vancouver here because I'm not sure, I'm not a water expert. I don't think anyone's going to believe what I say about water, but I've heard from a number of people and I've talked to senior staff about it over the last couple of years that some of the, some of the water does affect some of our fixtures and piping and especially some of the fixtures of lower quality. You know, given the, given some range and and the hardness and the softness and so on. And so I I don't think it's just about drinkability. I don't think we're hearing about the potential cost to construction and long-term maintenance of buildings in the community based upon the water. And and I've had some discussions with staff with that. So I wanted some more time to to try to get some of that information together. I understand some here have made up their minds already and and are big believers in the blended system. I don't think that that we should be looking at a blended system for a municipality that's growing at the rate we are with the population that we're adding. I think we should be looking at other alternatives rather than what we did when we were fifty thousand people. So that's just my opinion, but I wanted more information and some more time and and I'll look at some ideas on that. It wasn't my intention to create a water debate and I just want to make sure that responding to that it's got more to do with than just drinkability. Thank you.
Appreciate that. And we did have the time, so, you know, I think it's fair to have a little chat about it here at the time. So this meeting was certainly about the universal service budget, but, you know, drifting into the the water utility budget is certainly okay and it's been a good discussion and and the staff are aware.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, I'll see any other hands up. So it looks like we've come to the end of the discussion on this budget. Terminating.
Termination.
Counselor Davis, the second. The second. Counselor Whitmarsh, all those in favor, all those in party. Thank you. So we reconvene at one o'clock at the regular meeting and that will be on the same Zoom, same Zoom link. So we'll have a good lunch and we'll see you at one. Thank you.